Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here tonight. This is a city council meeting, just to make sure you're in the right room. It is Monday, July 1st, 2019. It's kind of a different meeting tonight because we're going to go through what seems like some of the normal agenda items, but we're going to handle some old business with this particular city council that's seated up here now. And then we'll take a break and recognize outgoing council members, swear in new council members, and then we'll really start the new council meeting at that time. So the order of things will be just slightly different tonight than normal. But we'll start this particular meeting with a roll call and determination of quorum.
Solomon, Modrick, Nordstrom, Drew, Scott, Drury, Laurenti, Roberts, Armstrong, Lewis. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the invocation by Randy Phipps, and following the invocation will be the pledge of allegiance.
Join with me as we pray. Father, thank you for this opportunity we have to gather freely in this country of the United States of America, here in South Dakota, in our hometown of Rapid City. We ask, Lord God, for your presence. We ask for your presence and peace that would surpass any understanding we would have of our own will, praying your will would be done in our lives and in our community, Lord God. Thank you for the blessing that we have of your presence, for the indication, Lord God, that you care about us and that you are concerned about us. And I thank you for the city council and their service to this community, and for our mayor and his service for our community, Lord God, and then for the agenda items, Lord God. Thank you that we would find ourselves being not about our own business, but about your business. Thank you for the time that we've dedicated to this purpose tonight. May it bring you honor and glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, everyone. And now for, we have an employee recognition, so I'd ask Chad Sales and company to come to the front, if you'd like to bring anyone with. And I'll introduce Police Chief Carl Jegeris, but it's a honor and a privilege to get to recognize city employees who have been here a while and met some important milestone in their career. And for that purpose, we'll turn it over to the chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I just want to recognize Chad Sales, he, for 10 years of service to the Rapid City Police Department. We were fortunate, 10 years ago, that he came to us from South Dakota Game, Fish and Parks with a few years of experience. And with us, he worked in patrol and as a detective for a period of time. And most recently, he is a detective assigned to our Project Safe Neighborhoods grant from the U.S. Attorney's Office addressing violent crime, primarily gun crime. And so he's personally responsible for taking many, many guns off of the streets, and these are what we call crime guns, guns that are either illegally possessed or they're stolen guns, which unfortunately, that is a reality in our community. So I want to thank Chad for his service and encourage at least 10 more years, if not more, and thanks to his wife for her support as well. So thank you, Chad. And you can have the microphone if you'd like it.
Item number two, under Old Business, to approve the minutes for the June 17th, 2019 regular council meeting.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Drew, second by Nordstrom. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under non-consent items, items three and four, there are no public comment forms filled out for those particular items, so we won't have a public comment period. We'll go straight to item number three, under Public Works Committee Items. So we'll go to Public Works Committee Chair Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. Request by KTM Design Solutions on behalf of Yasmeen Dream LLC for reimbursement for repayment of one half of construction cost for sanitary sewer improvements for the North Valley Park in the amount of $110,445.05. The recommendation was to send this to council without recommendation, and this item was continued from June 17th. I'd like to make a motion if I can.
Go ahead.
I would like to approve this item with option number three, which would include $449,000, excuse me, $49,999 for oversized costs and restructuring costs for the natural resources of the area. So that's my motion. Okay?
Okay. That was a motion by Drew, and we have a second by Modrick. Does everyone understand the motion? Okay, all in favor of that particular motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries with one no. Now, on to number four, under ordinances, second reading, ordinance number 6339 and ordinance regarding supplemental appropriation number five for 2019.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Scott, second by Nordstrom. All in favor of approval of item four, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing items, items five through 12. Likewise, there are no speaker requests for these particular items, so we'll skip the public comment period and go to public, or consent, public hearing items five through seven. We'll go to Steve Laurenti.
Just, thank you, Mayor. I thought for a minute, this last meeting, they had my mic turned off for probably a good reason, but, and I was actually just getting into the, to speak here, but I was going to pull every item on the consent calendar, but I'm not actually going to do that, so I'm just going to yield the floor at this point.
So the point is, in this relationship, then owing Steve Laurenti a favor. That's how you structured this whole thing.
Thank you, Mayor.
Who made that motion?
Move to approve items five, six, seven.
Yes, Scott made the motion. Solomon made the second to approve these items. All in favor of consent items five through seven, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Non-consent public hearing items eight through 12, starting with number eight. Second reading, ordinance 6326 and ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by KTM Design Solutions for CITRA LLC for a planned unit development zoning district for property generally described as being located northeast of the intersection of Nicole Street and Brook Street.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve, Scott, second by Drew. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, second reading, ordinance 6332 and ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by KTM Design Solutions for BH Capital Four LLC for a rezoning from general agricultural district to medium density residential district for property generally described as being located east of East Anamosa Street. Motion to approve, Solomon, second by Nordstrom. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, second reading, ordinance 6333 and ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by KTM Design Solutions for BH Capital Four LLC for a rezoning from general agricultural district to low density residential district two for property generally described as being located east of East Anamosa Street.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Laurenti and a second by Drew. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11, second reading, ordinance 6337 and ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by Brett Calvett, Brett Calvett, for MWM Rapid Holdings for a rezoning request from general agricultural district to light industrial district for property generally described as being located at 3414 Eglin Street.
Move to approve.
Approve, Scott, second by Drew. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 12, second reading, ordinance 6338 and ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by KTM Design Solutions for Lyle Hendrickson for a rezoning request from low density residential district to medium density residential district for property generally described as being located at 1804 East Highway 44.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve, Scott.
I'm abstaining.
Okay, who's seconding?
Second.
Second by Laurenti. Okay, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries with one abstention from Alderman John Roberts. And that's the end of the old business public hearing calendar. And now on to item 13, to approve emergency resolution number 2019-056, canvassing vote for the runoff election held June 25, 2019 for Ward Three.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Solomon, second by Scott. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 14, approve emergency resolution number 2019-057, canvassing vote for the runoff election held June 25, 2019 for Ward Four.
I need to abstain.
Motion to approve by Drew and a second by Laurenti. All, Pauline Sumption has something to say.
Thank you. I just want to, if you haven't already, outgoing council members, make sure you sign the two resolutions before you take off. Please, thank you.
Okay, we had a motion and a second on 14. Did we vote? Who's all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and Amanda Scott is abstaining. Okay, and now I'm going to come back down front so we can recognize some soon-to-be I suspect this is a bittersweet period of time for outgoing city council members. They've been here, chosen public service as their way of life for the last several years, and some during this last election have campaigned, some have decided to step down, but nonetheless, this is a time when it comes to close for this, for this chapter. And I think it's very admirable that people, citizens, just like all of you sitting out here and all of you watching on YouTube, would, would step out of that comfort zone and put yourself out here in public, in front of everyone, open for the public criticism, and open for some of the social and other liabilities that go along with public service, where you'd leave and you're not always the hero. And public service is one of those things where the harder you, the work, the harder you work at it, the same you get paid. The rewards are internal, and the rewards have to do with seeing a city grow, seeing a city develop, a process improve, a program get furthered. There are a lot of rewards that go with public service, and admittedly, it's not for everyone. But we sure wish here at the city of Rapid City that it was for more of you. This government belongs to the citizens, those of you sitting here and those at home, belongs to every one of us, every one of the 76,000 of us that reside here. And nothing will ever change that, because this is America. It's a great thing. But we need people like yourselves to decide that it's okay to come out here and do what these fine folks have done. So this is really an important time, and it's a, you know, we tend to poke a little bit of fun at each other here and rib each other here on the city council and before, during, and after some of these meetings, but it's really a, I think it's really an honor to have fine individuals serving the city. So I want to bring up first Amanda Scott. Amanda has served Ward Four since 2012, and she's been the council president since 2018. And being council president is, means being voted to be president by your peers, which that in itself is an honor, is an honor. So Amanda, this is a small but heavy token of our appreciation here for your years of public service and the dedication and the restless nights sometimes. And, you know, Amanda has brought her own personality and her own thing to the city council, and that thing sometimes comes across as this motherly chastising that goes along with, get your stuff, get your stuff in order before you bring it here. And that type of voice is valuable on the council. So Amanda, congratulations, and thank you for all your years of service.
Thank you. I'll keep it short and sweet, under that five-minute rule. Thank you, I leave the city in good hands.
And that's how you keep from getting choked up at a public meeting. Next, I want to bring up Steve Laurenti. Besides having one of the coolest names in the whole group, Steve Laurenti is someone on this council. He has served the city council since 2011. He's seen a tremendous amount of change in the last eight years. And he is probably one of the nicest guys you'd ever want to meet, even though he and I butted heads a couple times. I've left these meetings, and I believe he has too, believing that that goes with the territory. And there are times when you expect someone to speak up, when there's a particular type of budget item. Just as you heard, we voted on an item, Steve Laurenti was the lone dissenting vote. That's because he has convictions about certain things, and he brings them here into this chamber. This chamber is nowhere for yes-men or yes-women to reside. This is for individuals who come from their, step away from their life and their neighborhoods and their families for brief periods from time to time, and they come here and they stick to their guns, and they have a relationship with their constituents. Steve Laurenti, I think, has been true to that. He's voted very consistently over the years. He's paid particular attention to what's going on around budget time, and again, this is a type of voice that's valuable on a city council. So Steve, thank you for your eight years here at the city council. Appreciate it very much.
Well, Amanda really set the bar low, so, or maybe high, depending on your perspective. So I just wanted to thank the mayor, of course, and all of the previous mayors that I have served with over the years, especially the staff, because they are the ones that are here year in and year out. As you can see, some of us elected officials are leaving, and we have new elected officials going to take our seats here soon. So the staff is the ones that are doing the heavy lifting, year in and year out. The approximate 813 employees, the directors, I especially want to thank them for all of their hard work. It doesn't happen, what we do here on the council, at the dais, and all of the meetings that we go to, is nothing pales in comparison to what the full-time staff do for the citizens of Rapid City, year in and year out. So if there's any applause, I mean, honestly, they don't get enough. That standing ovation, I appreciate it, but honestly, it belongs to the staff. It belongs to the directors, because they do all the hard work. And so I guess I want to also thank the citizens of Ward Two and all of the citizens of Rapid City. I hope that I have, as the mayor has said, we've seen a lot of changes. Some people would say good, some people would say bad, but that's exactly what we do. We have to make decisions that we believe is going to move Rapid City forward. And I think that, in my opinion, I think Rapid City is a better place to live than it was eight years ago. I think we've made a lot of great decisions as a council and as staff has carried out a lot of the ordinances and all of the things that we've done, and all of the things that staff has brought forward. And I guess I'll just finish with saying that, and this is probably more philosophical, I'm going to try to keep it together, but citizens, I just hope that everybody remembers that, I think one thing that we need to do better at and continue to do, some of us are very good at it, is to forgive each other, is to plow forward together, because united we stand and divided we fall, right? It's an old adage, everybody knows that, but we need to remind ourselves that we're all in this together, and if we don't do it together, we're going to fail. So, and the last thing I want to say is that we should all not learn to love each other, but look at each other as brothers and sisters, and remember that, that we should all love each others and brothers, as brothers and sisters, because we have one Creator. And we all, should all work towards that, and remember that, when even we disagree, as the mayor has said, there are times when you disagree, but remember that we're all brothers and sisters, and we're all here, we all have different opinions, and just remember to love each other and forgive each other. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
I'd like to call up next Jason Solomon. Jason Solomon was a guy I'd never met before. He decided to run. And before he decided to run, he went around and asked people in positions, in elected positions, how they felt about their job, and if it really would be something that he would be a good fit for. I believe he did quite a bit of soul-searching and investigating before he jumped into it. He brings his own unique background. He grew up a fan of professional wrestling.
This is true.
And I might have been brought up that way, too. But he, he was brought up, he's mentioned it before, he was brought up and eating off of everything but a silver spoon. He has seen many sides of many life situations and arguments, and he's brought his compassion and wisdom and intellect into this. And he, I, I think over, over the last few years, since he's been on this council, I believe that he has fully invested and reinvested in what it means to be a servant leader. And he's in a, he's in a journey here, he's, this is a chapter of his life, we certainly haven't seen the last of him. And so for your three years of public service to Rapid City, and all you've done before, during, and after, Jason, thank you very much, and congratulations.
Well, the classy thing would do, to do, would be to pull Amanda Scott, but that's not what I'm going to do. So it turns out letting go of something you put your heart and soul into is pretty tough. I've loved this. It has been such an honor to serve this city. So I got a little speech, you okay with that? It won't be long, put me on a timer. And the rest of my council members are like, oh, here we go. You should live with me, right Reagan? My daughter. Well, before I get to this, let me quickly just do some thank yous and shout-outs. First of all, I just want to thank my family. They're awesome. I love them. My wife Gwen, daughter Reagan, my daughter, my daughter Reese, my son Reese, he's in the Army, he will kill me now if I call him my daughter again. But thank you all so much for your support, my parents, grandparents, my in-laws, my whole family, all of you, thank you for all your support. It means a lot. My friends that I've made everywhere in this community, it has been an honor. It's been an honor to serve with this great city council and this mayor. Steve and I have gotten along really well, but it had a few times too, but I think I made a friend in that relationship. And our city staff are tremendous, the directors, the rest of the staff. I thought Steve Laurenti did a great job articulating that, and I think it's something we all think of. You can't go wrong with appreciating people, and this city staff that we have are tremendous. The talent we have here is outstanding, and it's not by accident that Rapid City is succeeding. It's because of the great people that work here. And obviously, our citizens are wonderful, and it's been an honor to serve Ward Three and Rapid City. So I'm going to get on with this. South Dakota is where possibility lives, and there's no better example of this than right here in Rapid City. And while we have plenty of room to grow, we have much to be grateful for, and so do I. It's been my honor to serve Rapid City on city council. I'm proud of what we've accomplished the last few years. This experience has certainly helped me grow as a leader and as a person, and the lessons I've learned are invaluable. And I've got a long list of lessons learned, but I'll just share one with you tonight, and that is this: Together, we win. You know, when a team wins a championship, like a Super Bowl trophy or a Stanley Cup, it's kind of cool, because this beautiful big trophy gets up on a podium to be presented, but along the way, all these people get to touch it, all the teammates get to touch it. If you've ever seen the Super Bowl trophy, they get it, they kiss it, and they smudge it all up. This pristine trophy, by the time it gets to the podium for presentation, it's filled with smudges and kiss marks, and you're kind of like, ew, look at all the germs on that thing. And you might think that makes it lose its luster, but I think it's a beautiful picture of what teamwork is, and that's exactly what we have going on here. It takes a lot of people playing their part to move this city forward. And after all, a vision that you accomplish alone isn't much of a vision at all. So it takes teamwork to make the dream work, and it's going to need that coming in. We have our new council members coming in to join this team, Team Rapid City, and we have new opportunities and challenges awaiting us. The B-21's arrival means we have to be ready to grow. That means we have to have housing and infrastructure of all types to support it. More job opportunities from startups and thriving businesses and the retirements of baby boomers mean we need a qualified workforce to fill those positions. So we need to develop and train leaders and talent to fill them. And that's not just for today, but for tomorrow as well. And the widening divide in our culture with the things that separate us means we need leaders who can bring people together. And that's why we need leaders to rise up out of the community, who not only know when to stand their ground, but also know when to seek common ground. That's a very important thing that we need to do. That's a very important thing that we need today. But most of all, for Rapid City to be the best place possible, we need all of you that are hearing this, we need all of you to be the best you possible. Plato has this great quote that says, "The city is what it is because the citizens are what they are." And for Rapid City, South Dakota, to maximize our potential, we need each and every one of you to maximize yours. That means care for your family, be a friend, help a neighbor, forgive one another, love one another. And so the city council, mayor, city staff, and citizens of Rapid City, keep working to make Rapid City be the best place possible. If you do, we all win. I love you, Rapid City. It's been my honor to serve you. I'll miss this, I'll watch, I'll try not to bother you too much. God bless Rapid City, God bless South Dakota, God bless America, and God bless each and every one of you. Thank you.
Jason wants the whole council. And now, folks, the next item on the agenda is item 16, and that's a recess for us to swear in the new council, the half of the council that was up for election, the three new council members and the mayor, who all start a new term right now. So we'll take a few minutes and do that. Pauline Sumption?
By now, is she able to recite this to me, right?
I don't even remember my...
Where do you want him to get pictured? Raise your right hand and repeat after me, sir.
Okay.
I state your name.
I, Steve Allender.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support and defend.
that I'll support and defend.
the Constitution of the United States.
the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
and the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
against all enemies.
against all enemies.
foreign and domestic.
foreign and domestic.
that I will bear true faith.
that I'll bear true faith.
and allegiance to the same.
and allegiance to the same.
that I take this obligation freely.
that I take this obligation freely.
without any mental reservation.
without any mental reservation.
or for the purpose of evasion.
or for the purpose of evasion.
that I will faithfully...
that I'll faithfully and impartially perform.
the duties of the office of mayor.
Rapid City, South Dakota.
according to the law.
according to the law.
and to the best of my abilities.
and to the best of my abilities.
so help me God.
so help me God.
And then if I can get the five incoming council members, please. We do you all at once. They want you guys, not me, so we'll go this way.
Okay, I'll hold it. Hold on. Hi Darla Drew.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support and defend.
that I will support and defend.
the Constitution of the United States.
and the State of South Dakota. against all enemies.
foreign and domestic.
foreign and domestic. that I will bear true faith.
and allegiance to the same.
that I take this obligation freely.
without any mental reservation.
without any mental reservations.
or for the purpose of evasion.
that I will faithfully and impartially perform. the duties of the office of...
Ward One.
Ward Five. of Rapid City, South Dakota. according to the law. and to the best of my ability. so help me God.
Infrastructure.
Starting with item 17. Okay, this meeting will be back in session. Next order of business is for the election of city council officers. So for the election of council president, are there any nominations? Chad Lewis.
I nominate Laura Armstrong, please, if she'll accept.
Okay. Okay, are there any other nominations different than this? Darla Drew?
I nominate Richie Nordstrom.
Okay, are there any other nominations from the council? Any other nominations for the officer president? If not, we could have a motion to cease those nominations.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion from Lewis and a second from Roberts to cease the nominations. And so then, let's cast your ballot. And on the ballots in front of you, please put your name on there, and then write in either Armstrong or Nordstrom for city council president. And then pass those down to your right, to the assistant city attorney, Wade Nyberg, or the real attorney, I mean... Or I meant, the city attorney. Okay, well, okay. Beetowed, send them to Pauline Sumption. And I know she's an accountant, but I can count to ten, honest. Okay, votes are in. Armstrong, five, Nordstrom, four. The new city council president for the next year will be Laura Armstrong. Congratulations. Now for the election of vice president, are there any nominations for vice president? Lisa Modric. John Roberts.
I nominate Chad Lewis.
Okay, are there any other nominations from the floor? Any other nominations? If not, we could entertain a motion to cease the nominations. Motion to cease the nominations by Drew and a second by Roberts. Oh, a ballot. Everyone have a ballot? Okay, then go ahead and cast your vote for Darla Drew or Chad Lewis for city council vice president. Place them on the dais so that finance officer Pauline Sumption can retrieve them. Okay, the votes are in. Chad Lewis, five, Darla Drew, four. So the new city council vice president for the next year is Chad Lewis. Congratulations. Which also will mean, for the new council members, it will mean that next time we convene here, the seat arrangement will be different, and also you'll be hearing from the council leadership about your committee assignments and so on. Okay, now I believe we're ready to get back to business. Not sure that we need to go through another adoption of the agenda. Do we? Okay. All right, then we're on to general public comment. So now we're at the traditional start of the meeting, where most of you folks probably came for. Now, this is a time for general public comment, and this is a time for the members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the city council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at a meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of city council members present. We have two speaker request forms. One is from Kirsten Livermont. And Kirsten, while you're making your way up there, let you know that we have a timer here with, just like the traffic light, red, yellow, and green.
Oh, perfect.
You get three minutes, you can tell how you're doing here, and go ahead, anytime.
All right, so I work in education, I'm actually an assistant principal in the district, and I just want to tell you all a little story about what's happened in my life in Rapid City in the last week. One of the things we ask ourselves in education is, what's your why? Why do you get out of bed every morning? Why do you go to school? And deal with kids that may have an attitude, and so I'm asking the city council right now to remember and think about, what's your why and who are you working for? So prior to the Memorial Day weekend, we had our big snowfall, and a small sink appeared in my front yard. I called city engineers at that time and was told not to go looking for trouble, and if I looked under the sidewalk, that I wouldn't be able to afford what I would find there. At this point, we now know that there was a sewer leak, a water leak, record-breaking moisture this spring, bad soil, and a combination of all has resulted in a 20-by-20-foot sinkhole in my front yard that's now 10 feet deep and filled halfway with gravel. For someone who works in education and knows nothing about excavation, this has been an unimaginable situation. Damages have been caused by an incompetent contractor and myself not having any background knowledge on the situation. I think the thing that's most disappointing to me is that city officials were notified of what was going on at my house as early as Tuesday when construction started, and they continued to stop by. they continued to stop by because of broken water lines and other issues with neighbors' water and shutting things off. And in none of those instances did anyone provide any bit of advice. For the sake, they told me of being politically correct. So when asked pointedly, what would you do if this was your home? I was told, I can't answer that for you. I was also told by one gentleman that the city had all of the necessary equipment to fix a problem like this, but that the city didn't lend out their equipment to people like myself who just live here, that they only work on their own projects, and that I should find a vacuum truck, which I had never heard of before, but at least that gave me an avenue to pursue commercial companies who possess vacuum trucks. Residential companies do not, and commercial companies wouldn't look at me. Thankfully, my uncle is a state legislator and knew somebody who knew somebody who knew somebody and was able to get a commercial contractor to my house. They've since been working on the project for three days and have been unable to reconnect my sewer and water because of the damages caused by the company that worked for three days. They've been working in the heat, they've been working really hard, and it's not their fault. At this point, I'm being told that they're possibly going to have to go under the road, which will all fall in my lap as a homeowner as well, because the sewer line falls on my property. It's probably going to cost me in the end more than I make in a year as a school administrator, and more than I can afford. So I ask you, what is your why and who do you work for? Do you work to protect your citizens by doing the right thing, or do you allow them to fail by being politically correct? I think that there has to be an avenue in the city in order to allow citizens to ask real questions about things that are happening on their property and get some kind of response. And I'm more than willing to help create that avenue so that this doesn't happen to anybody else, because quite frankly, if construction had been shut down on the other company that started this project sooner, we wouldn't be looking at the damages that we have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And the next speaker request is from Natalie Slack.
Good evening. When I decided to come here tonight, I didn't realize that it was going to be such a special meeting, and I just have to say really quickly that everything that I think I know about civil leadership is from observing some of the leaders that are in this room today, and especially Jason Solomon, who left tonight. And so that was really kind of a neat moment for me to be here. I'm not here in any official capacity or on behalf of any specific organization, but I did want to extend a message of gratitude to Mayor Allender and to the city leadership who have worked to create a culture of growth here that has allowed for the first-ever mayoral proclamation designating July 7th to 13th as Pride Week in Rapid City. As an advocate and a community member, a local small business owner, the mom of three sons in three different schools in our district, I'm excited to be part of this robust and inclusive community. Those of you who are here today are invested members of making Rapid City the community that it is, and we're all working together to promote equality and opportunity for all of our residents. As such, it is my extreme pleasure to invite all of you to attend any of the seven events that we are hosting this year as part of Black Hills Pride Week. With nearly unanimous participation from downtown businesses for our first-ever Pride Art and Pub Crawl, to talented entertainment at Pride Fest in Memorial Park, and a celebration of interfaith communities on Sunday afternoon of Pride Weekend, means that this year's Pride Week looks to be Rapid City's best. I personally would invite and encourage you to attend any of these colorful and diverse opportunities to engage with and celebrate the achievements of and learn more about your allies, your neighbors, and the community that you live in. Thank you for your time, and happy pride.
Oops, thank you. That'll bring the, into the public comment period, and now into non-public hearing items, nineteen through fifty-five. There are no speaker requests for these items, so we'll skip the public comment and go on to consent items, four through forty-nine. So this is a point in the agenda where the council can vote on items four through forty-nine with one vote, or they can pull individual items off for separate consideration. So are there any motions or comments from the council? John Roberts.
I want to pull item thirty-one, please.
Okay, any other items to be pulled by the city council? If not, can we have a motion to approve all of these items with the exception of thirty-one? Richie Nordstrom, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Darla Drew. So all in favor of approving those items, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item thirty-one, approval of the East Rapid City Traffic and Corridor Analysis Study, final report, and this is an informational item. We'll go to John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reason I was pulling this is because I was looking at the 2000 traffic study that we did out there and comparing this study to it, and those numbers are so much different. So I was wondering if we had somebody from engineering or somebody I could ask why the numbers, community development?
Yeah, we'll go to Community Development Director, Ken Young.
Ken.
Yes, I've invited Kip Harrington, our transportation planner, to come and speak to this, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good evening, Kip Harrington, long-range planning.
Hey, Kip, thank you for coming up here. I was looking at the 2000 study from HDR, and they were talking about the build-out in 2045, the traffic counts on Anamosa by Menards being forty-three thousand, and in the new study, it shows twelve thousand three hundred.
That is correct. Every ten years, we get a census, so we update all our transportation information with the census, demographics, population, age, things like that. And then we also update our future projections as we get better and better land use projections, and we have more data to track our growth. So the way we project our future land use is we take a historical trend of population, we project that out. So we did that out to 2045, and our projections fell very closely in line with those projections that were included in Plan Rapid City, our adopted comprehensive plan. And then we work backwards from there. We start assigning that population into various areas called traffic analysis zones. They're basically like small neighborhoods of the city. And then we back those projections down into all those areas and come up with a similar number to what our projection is. So over time, you can see that development patterns change, people move into different areas, development changes between commercial and retail. And so we just feel we have a much better handle on what's actually going to happen in 2045, eighteen years later than that projection that was done prior to the year 2000. Population and land use forecasting is kind of a crystal ball, and we get better at it all the time as we have more and more data. So I think that we're a lot more confident in those numbers as they are at this time.
I appreciate that very much. I'm not very confident in those numbers at all, because I think they're way off. I think if you look at the new development that's coming in out there, Shepherd Hills, you're looking at somewhere before forty, forty-five, you know, it could be forty-five-hundred rooftops in that area, which is going to create a ton of traffic coming across there. I think one of the, looking at your modeling and the way the modeling was done, and looking at Anamosa Street going over to North Valley Drive and not connecting into Elk Vale, which will happen before 2045, and that's going to become a connector from Rapid Valley to Rapid City. And I just, I see these numbers being so far off, and then I look in this study, and the study saying that, that all of that, all of that traffic within that corridor, which is going to be Shepherd Hills now, will be all regional traffic? Great. You're going to have hundreds and hundreds of apartment units and thousands of single-family homes. Well, on a single-family home, I believe with your modeling, it's, what, ten trips per household per day?
Eight to ten, somewhere in that range, yes.
So at ten times four thousand, that's forty thousand that have the possibility of going in front of Anamosa, and I would say at minimum, there's going to be half that, and that's just from the single-family houses. From the apartments, it's what, six trips per day, per unit?
A little less than single-family homes, yes.
So, you know, if you add another, well, we know right now that there's going to be at least a hundred and fifty apartments in the near future that are going to be coming in on Elk, or on North Valley Drive. We know that there's a hundred and twenty single-family lots that have already been sold over on the other side, so the connection from, and I can't think of the road that's going to go across there onto North Valley Drive, is going to come in within the next couple of years, which is going to open up from Anamosa. The people are going to have to come through the neighborhoods if we don't do Anamosa Street. But I, and leaving all that aside, I mean, what really kind of concerned me about this is where it says that all of these streets are going to be regional in nature, so they should all be developer-cost streets. Okay, if you're talking about Anamosa there, which is a major arterial street, which is kind of interesting, because if your study shows that, and it's supposed to be a connector, maybe we should look at allowing the developer to take that street to an arterial street. You know, sixty-foot right-of-ways and two-lane roads is a heck of a lot cheaper to build than an arterial street. And I know that, you know, we will, quote-unquote, have oversized costs, you know, if we have the money to do it. But I, I just have a lot of concerns. We're looking at the largest development that Rapid City has ever seen, and we're looking at traffic counts that I think are absolutely ridiculous in the next twenty to twenty-five years. I just wanted to get this out, it's my opinion. The future will tell, you know, and like you said, every model changes. I think we're going to see a lot of change there just in the next five years. So I just wanted to get this on the council, and I wanted to get in front of the public. So, thank you, Kip, I appreciate you coming forward.
Hold on, Kip, anything to add?
I will say that we are currently updating our Metropolitan Transportation Plan. That'll be done next summer, so we'll have a brand-new model to go along with that, so that may change these things. We always look at that as we do our Transportation Improvement Program and our Capital Improvement Program to see what these priorities are. I did look at the area that is currently under construction, or you're talking about the development, especially that Shepherd Hills area. Right now, we have a master plan to show five hundred and fifty housing units. That's the only thing we have on the books. We are showing between 2018 and 2045, an over three hundred and twenty-seven percent growth in residential in that area that's surrounded Shepherd Hills and the surrounding area. So we believe that accommodates that Shepherd Hills development and some of that surrounding development. We're also showing increases of a hundred to two hundred and forty percent in employment, depending on the employment category in that. So we have anticipated a large amount of growth in that area, as much as four thousand, that may be, that may not be. But we had the study advisory team take a look at what's available for land out there, what's actually buildable, and then use our standard allotment of how many households per acre and things like that to develop our forecast for 2045. And we feel confident that this is a reasonable forecast. We try to make sure that it fits in with historical growth trends and make sure we're not over-projecting so that we're over-building in the future, and then we have facilities that are over-built for their need.
And you know, I get a rebut, too. I've got a little bit of time.
Kip, will there be another study between now and 2040, something?
Oh, this is a specific area for this. This study is specifically for this area and these corridors. Again, I said our Metropolitan Transportation will be completed next summer. We'll have updated travel demand forecast model. The one we're working on is five years old right now. We're going to completely overhaul the model, we'll have updated information, and then after that, we'll get new census numbers in 2022, which will allow us to even update it again even more in 2025.
So a work in progress.
This is always a work in progress. As of right now, these are, this is our best projections for this. There's nothing that's been slotted into our capital improvement program at this time. That's something that we'll take a look at as funds become available and take some of these recommendations into account in that.
All right, thank you very much for that. So we have no motion on thirty-one. Can we have a motion, please, to dispose of this item? Motion approved by Richie, second by Darla Drew. All in favor of this item, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries with one no from Mr. Roberts. This takes us through the consent items, on to non-consent items. We have no speaker requests for items fifty through fifty-five, so we'll go directly to item fifty under ordinances. First reading, ordinance six-three-four-zero and ordinance amending section seventeen-point-zero-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by AAB Engineering LLC for Rup Helmer Group for rezoning request from General Agricultural District to General Commercial District for property generally described as being located east of Haynes Avenue, just north of Catherine Avenue. Committee recommendation is to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Drew, second by Nordstrom. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item fifty-one, first reading, ordinance six-three-four-zero and ordinance amending section seventeen-point-zero-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by Jim Letner for Market Square LLC for rezoning request from Light Industrial District to Office Commercial District for a property generally described as being located at the southwest corner of the intersection of East St. Charles Street and Creek Drive.
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Drew, second by Modric. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next Public Works items. Just for old time's sake, we'll go back to Darla Drew to read this one in.
Wow, this is so retro. Okay, let's see. Authorized staff to advertise for bids for tower court storm sewer outfall stabilization project number eighteen dash two-four fifty-five slash CIP number five-one-two-zero-three, estimated cost three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Motion approved, Nordstrom. Second by Roberts. Go to Lisa Modric.
Thank you, Mayor. I had spoken at our Public Works Committee meeting on this and voted no, and I just need to establish what we have. I'm still concerned about the answers. I don't, I don't think they're in full, because that entire hillside, not just the stabilization of what is our right-of-way, is failing. The entire hillside, three lots wide, and the work from within our top to bottom to stabilize is only setting ourselves up for additional costs beyond the three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. I haven't gotten yet the report of how much we've already put into that right-of-way, but we're continuing to add, and this is just another place that we're not prepared for. I don't believe that it's been completely engineered and studied, as well as there's still a hillside to stabilize, not just the right-of-way. And I would like to have all of our council take a look at this and ask more questions about this storm sewer outfall. Dale Tech did state to me that we've got to stabilize because of its instability, but my question is, what is going to stabilize the unstable mountain that is failing up there? And it's truly a mountain. We're not talking about some type of a gouge through the dirt on there. We're talking about an entire mountain slide. So my concern and why I have to vote no on this is I do believe the three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, that's an estimated cost, is going to climb, and we don't, we're not going to stabilize this hillside and stabilize the funding. They're both going to go down the hill. Thank you.
Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. Could I direct another question to Lisa Modric, please?
Yes, if she would like to answer.
Yeah. So, so Lisa, this is your ward, so what would you like to see happen here? Did you further study, more money? I mean, I know you're going to vote no against this, I'm kind of leaning that way myself, but I'm not sure where we go from here.
And I'm not either, and I haven't had a clear answer on that. I did ask Dale, and he's not here now, and I don't think that there's anybody, I'm not sure if Ted's ready for this one either, and if you are, Ted, I'd love to have you. But the question that I have is exactly that. The only statement that I got after a public meeting was that it's been stamped by an engineer, but the previous project was stamped by an engineer as well, and we have an entire right-of-way, as well as three other properties, sliding down the hillside. The hillside is not stable, it's not going to be stabilized when we do this project. And we've got almost a half a million dollars going into it right now. So I, I have concerns, how many more thousands are we going to put behind it? And if I could ask?
No, thank you.
Ted, are you okay? I'll clear it for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, and maybe someone else will give you some of their time, but right now, I need to know from Ted. So, so this does not seem like a real fix. This doesn't seem like it's enough money to actually fix this problem. It seems like a Band-Aid to me. So tell me, you know, are we just putting good money after bad, or whatever it is that we're just not going to get accomplished, what we need to do with this project?
Well, thank you. Ted Johnson, Public Works Engineering. This is not a repair or fix the entire hillside area. It's a large area, it's in a lawsuit, there are several parties involved in it. This is to fix, when you call right-of-way, a water and sand, or storm sewer easement is primarily to stabilize that portion of the easement and replace the water line that's, that has been drained, disconnected, is not serving fire protection for that property up there. So this is not an emergency fix, but it is an emergency repair to put that facility back into function so that it can provide water to that hill.
Oh, so I understand you. This is not a fix of the... This is not a fix of the erosion of the hill. This is a fix for the water and to stabilize our water main there? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. It seems, I mean, it's a pretty big project. It's to remove a huge portion of the hill that was improperly compacted, put it in, bench it in, stabilize it back, left at the time, like it should have probably been before, or something been different. The design on the first project was, I guess you'd say, not complete based on the scope of the work they did. There were some discrepancies, some improper procedures with placing that material. There is some underlying faults in that property that maybe weren't properly identified before this was all done. But this is a, basically, emergency repair to stabilize the portion of that hillside that carries that water line up to serve this property, Tower Court, and then the other commercial properties.
Okay, now, understanding of the safety fix. I think I can say yes.
And it does not, it does not address all the hillside on both sides. It addresses the piece that's needed to support that water line. And also, we'll fix the storm sewers, so it should not erode based on that storm sewer runoff, because we're going to pipe it to the bottom of the hill.
But there's always going to be rain and those kinds of things, and this is the type of thing that, you know, I saw those, those supports that were there that were exposed, and so of course, I'm very concerned about these homes there. But maybe we'll see a more comprehensive fix soon, or, you know, is that something that's in the plan?
Eventually, I guess is a better term. So it is in litigation. We are working, trying to work with the property owners, the contractors that are involved in this, to see if there is a fix or can come to some solution to stabilize and repair the rest of the damage.
Okay, for me, I, I will have to think about this, and I see John Roberts is in the queue, so I'm just going to just ruminate on this. Thank you, Ted.
John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ted, while you're up there. You know, this is a good project that should have never happened. The city shouldn't be paying for this because of, you know, compaction issues and different things. But one thing that I want to clear up is, you know, it's unfortunate that this hill is deteriorating and sliding, but it's not a city responsibility. This is a responsibility of the developer that did this at one time. If we can, if the homeowners can come to an agreement with them, they may get some of their money. I doubt if they're going to get it all, which is unfortunate. You see things like this happen, you know, and there's really never, there's never, nobody's ever completely happy with it, because it seems like the homeowners in the end are the ones that always get, that always pay at least a portion of it. But as far as the city being responsible for it, we're not. We're not responsible for this, this hill sliding away, at least in my opinion. Is that right, Ted? Is that?
Well, that's my opinion, too, and as well as some others. There's some disagreement on that between parties, but no, we don't want to believe the city's fault.
Well, you know, usually it's the parties that are involved that are going to have to pay out of their pocket that want the city to pay for it. And, you know, unfortunately, if you look at our infrastructure all around town, this isn't, this isn't one issue. I mean, you know, we have, we have issues with streets, we have issues with water pressure, we have issues with sewer. We have, we just went through months of lots of rain where lots of people had water and sewer backing up into their basements. So, you know, it's unfortunate, but if the city stepped up and took care of this problem with this hill sliding, because I can think of a couple more of them that it's happened to in the last, you know, six to 10 years over there where people's backyards all of a sudden went into a canyon, where do we stop? You know what I mean? We have to, have to draw the line at what is a city responsibility and what is a developer, builder, owner responsibility. And it's unfortunate. It's unfortunate, but we can afford to pay for everything, and we definitely can afford to pay for things that are not our responsibility. So, anyway, thank you, Ted.
Thank you.
Lisa Modrick, but I can't remember if you had any time left.
I think I have like a minute and a half.
Okay.
I just want to finish, and I do thank you, Ted, because I know you've been up there now following this project for quite a while. And just to clear the dais, it's not about the city fixing a hillside, a mountain that is sliding. It's about protecting the infrastructure that we're getting ready to put $375,000 in, that we've already put hundreds of thousands, tens of thousands, probably hundreds of thousands already in aligning that. And is this money going to also fail as the hillside has not been protected? I mean, there's a, there's a lot that has to happen up there, and if you're going to try to find bedrock, good luck. So where, where is this pipe going to go? And Ted, I've got to ask you before I run out of time. Wasn't there already the fire hydrants and that pre the alignment of this hillside going with, with pipe going up and down it? Because it used to be an open trench, and when there are two, two hydrants there, is there only one now? Because it was, it was fed by another source.
There used to be two hydrants. When this was, the Tower Court, Tower Road project was close to completion, there, the water, the tight end of the downhill line was stubbed at the top of the hill to allow some settlements and consolidation, some more development, and actually to build the water line from the north this direction. So there was an extra hydrant that terminated that water line. When the water line was looped through to Cathedral or Fairmont, that one hydrant was eliminated. It was basically a duplicate.
And why I can't support this project is I do not think that it's prepared to go down this hillside that's, that's not ready for this. I think there's other looping and other things that can be done, as well as the entire roadway of Tower Court is failing. So we've got failure that goes all the way from, from Tower down to where the drainage cell is. So I cannot support this, because I don't think that the $375,000 is going to be the end. I think it's just the beginning. Thank you.
Could I add one thing?
Sure.
We did look, tried to find other options to not replace this water line because of the extreme cost and the fragile location. There is no other option to provide that loop, to provide the water that's needed for those properties. The other option, which, not only an option, wouldn't make any sense, would be to build a water tower up there, which would be, you know, a million dollars, $2 million. It's the more expensive. But we did look hard at trying to figure out some way to not have to replace this, and we could not come up with any other options except this, to provide that loop and provide the redundancy in fire flow.
All right, thank you, Ted. Darla Drew, 30 seconds.
Thank you. After listening to this, I'm going to vote for this and trust that staff has the best interest of these homes in their hearts and in their sights, and that I will trust their knowledge of science and engineering to make sure that this works to the best of our ability for those residents. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item 52. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries with two noes. Stroman, correct? And Modrick? Okay. All right, on to item 53 under Community Development Items. A request by KTM Design Solutions for G&amp;G Investments LLP for a preliminary subdivision plan for proposed Lot 7 of Block 1, Lots 5 and 6 of Block 5, and Lot 1 of Block 6 of Westwind Subdivision, generally described as being located east of the intersection of Elkvale Road and Anamosa Street. And the committee recommendation was to approve with stipulations.
I'll vote second.
Motion by Modrick and a second by Drew to approve with stipulations. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 54, request by AAB Engineering LLC for Roop Helmer Group. Am I saying that correctly? For a preliminary subdivision plan for proposed Lot 1 of Block 1 of Dollar General Rapid City, generally described as being located east of Haynes Avenue just north of Catherine Avenue, and committee recommendations to approve with stipulations.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Drew, second by Modrick. Everyone in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Down to item 55, under bid awards, approve award for 65-gallon and 95-gallon garbage and recycling containers to re-rig in the amount of $57,517.80 as the lowest bidder, meeting all specifications. Motion approved, Nordstrom. Is there a second?
Second.
Excuse me?
Second.
Second by Roberts.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of item 55. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now, going to the next page of the agenda, we've handled everything here, some of this in the old business, so this brings us right down to the bill list. Item 56, we'll go to Finance Officer Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no additions to the bill list, so the total is that which is attached at
Motion to approve by Drew, second by Nordstrom. All in favor of approving the bill list, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.